Good evening and welcome to the NORAD School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020. First order of business is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes tonight, both from November 18th. The first is the business meeting and the second is executive session. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second? Thank you, Emory. Any discussion? All in favor? Wonderful, 5-0. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
No, we do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. And Dave Putania, there aren't any warrants, correct?
Correct, no warrants this week.
Okay. So moving right along to public forum, we do have one email that came in earlier today. Again, as a reminder to the community, if you want to have us read an email for public forum, please email us at NPSchoolcommittee@norad.k12.ma.us. Tonight's email came from Tony Amato, and Tony writes, "Good morning. Back on 11/6, Governor Baker, along with the DPH and DESI, updated their guidance on getting the kids back to school full-time. Districts and schools and communities designated gray, green, or yellow are expected to have students learning fully in-person if feasible." And just so you know, that part of the email is bolded and was taken directly out of some of the guidance from DESI. With NORAD being in the yellow for the last month, is the superintendent and school committee working on a plan to get the kids back in school full-time or more than they currently are? I have two children, one in high school and one in the middle school, who are hybrid and want to be in school full-time along with many, many other children. Scientific evidence suggests the benefits of learning in-person, like instruction quality and mental health supports, outweigh the risk of contracting and spreading COVID-19. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing your responses. Tony Amato." And I am just going to refresh that email account and see if anything else just came in. I do not see any other emails for public forum, so at this time, I will declare public forum closed. So we are moving right along to appearances. We have three appearances this evening. The first is Representative Rogers, who is here to provide an update and engage in a discussion with us around funding. Representative Rogers, how are you?
Good, thanks, Madam Chair. I hope that you and your family and all the members of the administration and the rest of the honorable members of the school committee are all healthy and staying safe. So thank you for having me before you.
Yeah, thank you for joining us. I know I had shared some questions that the committee had for you around funding for both this year and next fiscal year. So what good information, hopefully, do you have for us this evening?
Well, despite a difficult year on the state level, as difficult it has been on the local level, I'm sure, and I want to commend you for your leadership during these difficult and challenging times. You know, the budget, the FY21 budget, unfortunately, is not yet complete. We do expect it to be on the governor's desk, hopefully, before Christmas. The bad news is that the Commonwealth is, you know, revenue loss of 8.6% of revenues anticipated before the pandemic. The good news is, however, because of your advocacy, because of the advocacy of the administration, now working together with Senator Rush, we've been constantly meeting with Ways and Means chairs, both in the House and the Senate, for months now, to hold, not only hold harmless Chapter 70 and education programs like sped circuit breaker and charter school reimbursement and other funding programs, but we've been advocating for increases that despite the $3.6 billion haul that the Commonwealth has to deal with in FY21, we can maintain and should maintain our commitment to the Student Opportunity Act that we enacted and the governor signed a little more than a year ago. So the House and the Senate have not put a conference committee report together for an up or down vote for the House and the Senate so we can get it on Governor Baker's desk. However, the numbers are going to stay the same. The good news is, you know, this honorable committee prepared for cuts. State level, Senator Rush and I have been certainly fighting against any level or form of cuts in Chapter 70, or unrestricted general government aid, or sped circuit breaker, or charter school reimbursements, but actually fighting for increases that we, I think, guaranteed to the schoolchildren of the Commonwealth this time last year. So the good news is, the current funding from Chapter 70 of $8 million will see a 14% increase. Now, that's despite 8.6, yeah, 6.8 revenue loss in the Commonwealth coffers this fiscal year. So, you know, we went from $6.6 million in FY19 to about a little more than $8 million, was a 19% increase for FY20. There was a lot of consternation about FY21, but the good news is the number that you can bake in, because the Senate and the House are both in agreement on this. The governor's not going to veto it or reduce it. Will be $9,166,992. So that will be the Chapter 70 number for FY20, 21. We're just waiting for the official paperwork to come from the Senate and House conferees so that we can vote it up and put it on the governor's desk. Unrestricted general government assistance will be level funded. It won't be cut, so it'll be the same as FY20. So all told, between these two budget items, will be $14,006,244. So that's an 8.6% increase between those two figures. So that's the good news. You can take those numbers to the bank short of some sort of cataclysmic, God forbid, event that happens between now and then. But because the House and the Senate are both in agreement on those numbers, you can expect to see those numbers, those funding levels on the governor's desk and signed and supported by Governor Baker. That also, that new Chapter 70 formula under the Student Opportunity Act builds in everything that we collectively have been advocating for, a Chapter 70 formula change or reform, which includes actual employee healthcare costs, both active employees and retired employees, Norwood School District, but also builds in a truer, more accurate percentage of sped students, both in district and out-of-district placements, as well as ELL and low-income students in the various school districts across the Commonwealth. So this is the second year in a row we've maintained, as the legislature has maintained its commitment to keeping that funding formula renewed and on track, relatively speaking, so that we honor the Student Opportunity Act, which we all celebrated this time last year. But as some of you may recall, when, the last time we met in person, I had this, and I still do have a sort of healthy institutional fear that my colleagues in the House and the Senate walk away from commitments they've made in prior years. This year, I'm proud to say that by and large, the House and Senate has maintained its commitment.
Thank you. Is there any questions on the FY21 budget that anybody would like to ask Representative Rogers? Mayeth?
So Representative Rogers, thank you so much for coming and talking to us about this, and thank you for advocating on our behalf. It was great news when we got it, that, you know, we weren't going to see a cut that, you know, as you mentioned, the town had planned for, you know, an actual reduction. And so we're thrilled that it's not going in that direction. Of course, we'd be even happier if we could still have the amount of money we thought we were going to have back in January. But I'm happy with the Chapter 70 money. I think that's going to put us in good shape. My question was, you mentioned a little bit about the special education circuit breaker. Do you have any sense of when we might be receiving estimates for that? And do you have any sense of how much reimbursement we might be able to look for? In terms of percentages?
Yeah, you know, the intent, the good news is to fully fund the sped circuit breaker, which requires the Commonwealth to reimburse school districts 75 cents on the dollar for every dollar that exceeds four times the foundation budget level. The House budget that we engrossed for FY21 funds that account and the OO12 account, funded at $328 million. The Senate's about $3 million shy of that, about 325, but both are sort of in the wheelhouse and enable us to fully fund the circuit breaker for FY21. So that's the good news. I mean, and even, you know, charter school reimbursement is sort of in that same sort of realm.
Do you know exactly when we should expect to hear the final decision on the circuit breaker?
You know, it can be fluid, you know, working with the executive branch on exact numbers, because it's a retrospective program where you're sort of looking back to the prior years. But I would think, you know, by the end of, you know, the second quarter, which is coming, we're coming up on it, we'll know the exact amounts. You know, the difficulty of a $3.6 billion deficit is that, you know, you have to be careful. We do have about that same amount in stabilization, about $3.6 billion. We have one of the highest rainy day accounts in the nation as a percentage of our budget, which is good. The problem with that is, is you can't spend it all in one year. We're spending about 40% of that this year. That's how we're getting out of FY21. We were able to close last month FY20 without using any money from the stabilization account. So, you know, I expect possibility of supplemental budget in January or February, or as late as March, to fully fund, sorry, fully fund the sped circuit breaker if needed. If the $328 million or the $325 million is not enough, and I suspect, you know, somewhere, the conference committee report will be somewhere between those two numbers. It certainly won't be less than $325 million.
Thank you. Other questions on FY21 budget? So Representative Rogers, I know you're still working on the FY21 budget, but, you know, typically, school districts, beginning of January, start to work on the next year budget. So what can you tell us in terms of timeline, numbers, expectations we should have for FY22?
It's a great question. You know, when you're chair of Ways and Means, no one tells you until you get the job. No one told me, while I was the chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, that you're actually dealing with three budgets. You're trying to close out the prior year. You're trying to draft, spend a lot of time drafting, making changes to the current budget. And then you have to predict and pick a consensus revenue for the ensuing fiscal year. So you're really juggling three balls in three fiscal years. The daunting news for FY22, we have to pick a consensus revenue number by January 15th. It's six weeks away. The governor has to file an FY22 budget within seven weeks. There's no expected delay on that. We're not asking for a delay. The governor wants the delay. The governor certainly, unless we change the state finance statute, change the constitution, he has to meet that deadline. So it's coming up on us very, very quickly. The good news, as we look at the Department of Revenue reports, we look at September revenues, October revenues, and just received November receipts from the Department of Revenue. They look pretty healthy. Things look pretty good for the Commonwealth. The receipts are up 2% higher than this time prior year in those three months. So, you know, is that great news? No, but things could be worse. In three months, a trend don't make. But as we have to build for FY22, you have to look at the past and then the present in order to predict what happens in the future. And I've done five consensus revenues as the chair, and we pull in all the economists, we'll be pulling them in this month. We'll be having hearings, a joint House and Senate Ways and Means Committees with the Governor Baker's administration and finance team, and we will be pulling in the state's leading economists. But, and they will be making their estimates, and then we pick an estimate. And it's a guess, it's our best guess. But, you know, I'm hopeful, you know, because we were able to get through FY20 and so far, building a budget for FY21 without any support, really, from the federal government. I'm still hopeful that we will get some level of relief on sort of a statewide basis that we can pass on to municipalities and school districts. I'm still hopeful that that will occur. I'm in daily communication with Congressman Steve Lynch, Senator Rush and I, talking to either the congressman or his staff. But we still have money in reserves that we can employ in FY22. So education still, despite, even if we don't have any sort of federal relief. I know that the House, Senate, United States Congress were talking about differences between state relief. I don't see any of that helping our school districts right now. There's a difference between a $500 billion package and a $900 billion package, and there's disagreement on that. I think I'm not expecting any relief before the end of this calendar year. And I'm hopeful that there might be a package coming in late January, early February, that can help out the several states.
Thank you. Are there questions about FY22 beyond what Representative Rogers shared? No. Dr. Thompson or Dr. Wyeth, is there anything from your perspectives that you would like to ask or share with Representative Rogers to advocate on our behalf?
Yeah, so, you know, I think Rep. Rogers knows that we are, I mean, we are in Norwood are luckier than a lot of other communities in the Commonwealth, because we had local support. You know, when I clued to my colleagues who are in the area, a lot of them did not have the type of support that we had in Norwood, and they're not able to provide the kind of instructions we're able to provide. And I think that is important. I mean, obviously, we would like to be doing even more, but I think the, you know, the funding piece and not having a Second Cares Act, Heroes Act, really, really affected a lot of communities. I had anticipated that that money would have come through, and I would not have asked town meeting for the money that we did. But we did it, and we did get the support of the town, you know, to do this important work. But that is not the case elsewhere in the Commonwealth, and it is going to become a bigger problem going forward, because these towns are not going to be able to. And, you know, Norwood has a pretty diverse tax base, but it will get strained as we go forward to be able to continue any sort of, and we're going to need more funding to fill gaps when we get them in full-time as well, which is another thing that needs to be considered. So I appreciate your pressure and working with Mr. Lynch. You know, as someone who has lobbied on the national level, it's not our delegation. It's kind of a nice cup of coffee and chance to talk, but there isn't much disagreement there. And we do support everyone, we do appreciate everyone's support on that.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you, Doc. I'm trying not to make a political statement. This is not, it's just, you have to be careful. I think a lot of eyes are watching the Georgia runoff to see whether or not the US Senate will flip to one certain party. And if that's the case, then that election will start December 14th, and then it'll ensue for 16 days. And then the election will be January 5th, 2021. So it's right around the corner. You know, because I know the minority party, current minority party in the US Senate, wants to do the Heroes Act. On all branches of the Heroes Act, as the House has already shown. And if that's the case, it'll be 50-50 in the US Senate with the vice president-elect, who would be vice president, you know, on January 20th, who would break the tie as the president of the United States Senate. And then you'd see a shift on funding. I'm trying not to be political, but I think, I think, I'm just thinking about, as you think about, as every member of the school committee thinks about, the schoolchildren of Norwood and funding that, you know, we, the Commonwealth, and we as a town so desperately need, require for the quality education of our schoolchildren, period. And I know that that's not a political statement, that's a constitutional obligation.
Yep. Thank you.
Yeah, I also thank you for your work, Representative Rogers. We appreciate it immensely. There are two things, I think, that we are going to have serious needs for looking down the road. We are going to need some robust funding for summer programming, and we need to have that provided for us by the state. There are going to be a lot of kids who need some additional support over the summer to make up those gaps, close the gaps as much as possible. We also obviously need ongoing staffing support. In our remote learning academy, we are very shorthanded, and we need more funding for staffing for the remote learning academy. If we can bring all the kids back, that'd be great, but that's not looking like that's going to happen anytime soon. So, you know, giving us some flexibility to hire staff on a short-term basis is critical.
Thank you, Doc. Thank you. You know, I also want to make you aware that there is a difference in the House and Senate version of this FY21 budget that you could advocate for, you could call the conferees. You know, my staff could give you all that contact information. But we created a new line item, it's 7061-0027. It's for coronavirus prevention grants. It's a $53 million item that helps out school districts, provide quality onsite and remote learning opportunities with technology grants and PPE, pretty flexible. And the formula that the House employs is it's $25 per foundation, based upon foundation enrollment, and $75 based upon low-income enrollment. So that's still in play. I'm hoping the Senate, as a House guy, my two favorite words are "Senate receipts", because that's what they have to formally say in conference committee in order to get our number. So I hope the Senate receives, and we get that full $53 million part of money so that, you know, you can begin to access that money. And I'll be happy to assist you with DESI on that. I did speak with or text with the chair of DESI today. She's a good friend at Norwood Public Schools. I know, Madam Chair, you had a chance to speak with her, I think, in summertime.
Over the summer.
Catherine Craven, who, you know, was wonderful when she chaired the Mass School Billing Authority. She was the first chair ever, who helped us build the new Norwood High School. You know, I spoke with her about a concern. I spoke with her about the resolution, about, you know, the MCAS requirement for this current fiscal, for this current school year. There were many of us, few of us in the minority, that tried to amend the state budget, FY21 budget, to suspend the MCAS for this school year, given all the pressures. You're talking to the husband of a public school teacher. All the pressures, all the anxieties, all the challenges on our teachers, on the administration, and on the members of our various school committees, trying to deal with the pandemic and remote learning, hybrid learning, in-person learning. You know, I asked her today, you know, is there a lot, is there some, any talk about suspending the MCAS requirement? She unfortunately thinks it's still going to happen. We tried to get that amendment, I think it was 460, through on the House budget. We did not prevail in the House budget debates. But I think that she agrees that there needs to be concessions and accommodations as to how the test is administered and, you know, and how the data is used. So, you know, if MCAS is going through this year, if it's not going to be suspended, and I support suspension, if it's going through, it looks like, unless you folks are hearing differently, it looks like it's gonna, it's not going to be suspended, it's going to be required. Then, you know, we have to be fighting for accommodations and concessions that they'll work for those who administer the test, for those who take the test, and for those who assess the test.
Yeah. Thank you for following up on our resolution. I had sent it to you and other people after our last meeting when we approved it. So I appreciate you following up on that. And I did send it directly to the Board of DESI and to Commissioner Riley. I unfortunately did not hear back from any of them, but I did send them a resolution and write them a letter. And I think, you know, the district will continue to advocate for what we stated in that resolution and, you know, appreciate your support and anything that you can do to help us there. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I just have one more question for you, Representative Rogers. Over the summer, when you and I talked, we spoke about wraparound services for our children and their families, and the funding that was necessary there, both for districts but also just in the communities. Things like transportation to and from school, extended day before and after school. And you and I also talked about, like, the mental health support and the needs of our students. Any updates in those three areas, either at the state level or what you're hearing from Congressman Lynch?
You know, it's still being discussed. It's on the front burner, not because of your bureaucracy and others like you. It's still on the front burner of discussion. So the issue is not going away. You know, on transportation, I fought for years to, just to, I was the first one ever to file a bill to change sped circuit breaker to include sped transportation costs to help school districts get to that circuit breaker quicker, to get the relief faster. The Student Opportunity Act, after seven years of fighting for it, changes the circuit breaker formula to include transportation costs. This year, we continue to honor that commitment. So, you know, you talk about transportation. That is, I don't have to tell the administration, I don't have to tell the school committee how costly it can be. the administration, I don't have to tell the school committee how costly it can be.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from Dr. Wyatt, Dr. Thompson of the School Committee at this time for Representative Rogers? Well, we appreciate your time tonight. You're welcome to stay for, you know, some or the rest of our meeting. Um, the next two appearance topics might interest you. We are talking more, you know, about the Department of Health and what's going on in our town, and then we are also talking about our extended day program. So if you wanna remain to hear those conversations, you're more than welcome to.
I'll remain. I'll probably turn my video off. But no, thank you. And I just wanna thank everyone, um, both the members of the School Committee and the administration for all your leadership during these times. Um, it certainly doesn't go unnoticed by Senator Rushman. Uh, we value everything you do for our schoolchildren here in Norwood, um, and also for the parents. They know how hard you work. They know the sacrifices you make. Um, you don't do this job for fun. Um, you do it for the children. Uh, and as a parent of two Norwood High School children, I just wanna thank you for all your wonderful work.
Thank you so much. All right, so moving along to our next appearance, Sigal Reese is back again. Thank you, Sigal, for joining us this evening. Um, I believe you have a brief presentation just to update us on the health situation and caseloads, correct?
Yes, uh, I can just share a little data like we do usually at the beginning of our presentations. Pull it up. Great. Uh, have you been able to see it?
We can.
There we go. Um, so, actually, can you see the full screen?
No, I gotta go into present, I think.
I find it easier to do as a PDF, but I think you can see it now, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so as we do usually, I will share the data from the last week. The report should come out tomorrow. Um, but it's based off the information pulled Wednesday morning from the database. So it'll be encompassing the dates of November fifteenth to the twenty-eighth. Um, during that two-week period, we had about a hundred and thirteen cases, um, which puts us at a rate of twenty-six point eight per average daily case count per hundred thousand. And then, um, we expect a positivity rate of three point eight four. Again, numbers might vary a little depending on the time that the state draws down the data and the timing that I draw down the data, because obviously the numbers are constantly moving throughout the day. Um, still, like we talked about, um, no large, you know, clusters. Most of our clusters are household clusters, which we would expect. Um, and then we know that the exposures are a mixture of workplace and social exposures. Um, and, you know, a common question we get is, you know, if we are gonna see a spike from Thanksgiving, when would we? And I think we'd start to see that in the next couple of days if we were going to, um, because of the incubation period of about five. Most people, if they're gonna convert, it's about four, five, or six days from their exposure. And then with the, um, the state metrics, we are still expected to be in yellow with our, because of our percent positivity is not over five. Um, it's really been bouncing around in the three percent, um, which is good and consistent, which means we are keeping up with our testing. And I have a slide at that, showing that at the end. Um, but definitely our average case count and our case count does keep rising, which you can see in the chart there. Um, so the average age, again, forty-four point two tends to be younger in the recent data. The range, though, just like I presented last time, the range is very wide from, you know, six-month-old to all the way to a ninety-three. We are seeing, um, a wider range of ages. For a while there, it was really concentrated in the twenty, thirty, forty, fifty-year-olds. But now we're back to seeing that range, but I would still say, um, our average has definitely come down from where we were in the spring and even in the summer. Um, so we are seeing younger cases. Only nine cases out of that hundred and thirteen over the same two-week period were, um, people in Norwood schools, either students or staff. Again, we are not seeing any transmission in the school, because schools are doing a great job with those safety standards. And like we've talked about, because of that hybrid model and most students only being in two days a week, really lessens the chance that they'd be in school during their infectious period. We do, however, see a couple of the cases. Um, and again, I think just like last time, we happen to have two, same like last time I presented here, two cases, um, where there were close contacts identified. Um, but at this point, as of today, none of those close contacts have converted into cases. And just to see the age breakdown on the chart there, um, where, again, we have that wide spectrum, the wide range of age, but tend to be concentrated in twenty-thirty, in this case, fifty-year-olds. Twenty-year-olds and fifty-year-olds were the highest in this two-week period. And I know this chart is very small. It's hard to read. Um, but what I did was I went back and I calculated our testing data and our percent positive, um, really since the beginning, since March, where, you know, we obviously did not have the capacity for testing that we do now, um, in the percent positive. So, um, you know, the last four weeks, we've really been in the three percent or percent positive and a pretty good testing rate. Um, with testing over thirty, thirty-five hundred, thirty-two hundred, um, for this last two-week period, uh, tests administered on Norwood residents, so that's quite a bit in a two-week period. So that's all the data I had to present, but I think, um, most for discussion, I'll let you lead it, Madam Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Sigal, for sharing that data with us. Um, you know, just one thing that's so interesting on that first chart you showed. Um, I appreciate that you added like the color coding of the risk level of where we are, and, you know, it's just so interesting to see those couple of weeks of red, um, that happened before they changed the metric. So then you see the yellow, but we're obviously at a higher case count and percent positive rate than we were when we were identified as red. Um, but just for anybody watching at home, that's because they changed the metrics on us. Um, before we, um, talk more about some communications and protocol, um, were there any questions for Sigal on the data that she just shared with us tonight? Okay, so last time Sigal was here, we were talking through pivoting from the hybrid to full remote. Um, she and Dr. Thompson and Kathy Bishop and I started to put together those different steps of, you know, who would make the decision and how would the decision be made? Um, and Dr. Thompson, can you pull up the one that's linked in the packet on the agenda, um, between fully remote and hybrid?
Yep, me pull it up.
Thank you. So as he's pulling that up, it's step four that I wanted to have a discussion around again with the committee, um, because after the last school committee meeting, um, thinking about it more, and I reached out to Dorothy Presser at the MASC for her guidance, um, because, you know, much of the pandemic is a lot of gray area, and, you know, figuring out what is the health decision, what is the school committee decision, what is an operational and administrative decision? Um, and I think we might wanna talk about the fourth step again. Um, thank you, Dave, for pulling that up. Um, so the step four in front of you now that's in our packet, um, is not the language that we approved last time. Last time we said that if a entire school was going to pivot, um, that the superintendent with input from the public health director and also in consultation with the Chair of the School Committee and the Chair of the Board of Health, um, would be required. But after talking, um, again, with Dorothy from MASC, um, I don't think, um, at that level, the Chair, myself, or the School Committee really has the authority to be involved. I think it's more operational and under the administrative team. Um, so what I'm proposing tonight and would like to discuss with the committee, um, is that if it is a whole school that has to pivot from hybrid to full remote, um, that it be the superintendent with input from the public health director and obviously the principal of that building. Um, and then we would be notified, and Dr. Thompson would explain why the decision was made. Um, but I don't think the Chairs of the two boards need to be involved in that decision making. But thoughts, questions from the committee? Dave, did you wanna share something? Katania?
Just trying to put into thought. I mean, I think that in this case, it's important to be as quick as possible in such emergencies, so I'd rather have it in the administration's hands with the Board of Health, um, you know, to have all of us just get online in a public forum to discuss it and, you know, get that together. We just delay what we have to do in terms of safety, so I think it's a good plan.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Joan, did you have something you wanted to share?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with who makes the decision, um, around that, that operational decision, but it does fall within the School Committee purview to talk about PR and talk about public relations and keeping the community informed. And so I'm still uncomfortable with the vagueness of step four. Um, and I'm not seeking to, um, remove discretion. I'm seeking to make, I would like to discuss making that language more accessible to a layperson for them to understand.
So Joan, there is another document that Dr. Thompson created that we can look at next. Um, it was kind of
Is that in our packet?
Um, I don't know. Dr. Thompson, did you add it in the packet or was it just in the email?
It was just an email that I sent. Was it last, yesterday afternoon?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry. I only saw this chart in that email. I apologize.
Okay.
So we can talk through that and Dave can pull that up in a moment, but before we talk through those parameters, um, Joan, is everybody okay with the step four that's in front of us? And can we go forward with, um, publishing this document as it is edited before you tonight?
Fine with that. Do we have to make a motion or?
Yeah, can you make a motion, Dave?
Sure. I make a motion that we approve the document as is.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Roll.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Emery. Any further discussion on this document? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
A five-zero? Okay. Thank you. Um, so Dr. Thompson, can you pull up the other document that kind of gets into the public relations and the communication for, you know, what criteria you'd be using?
Um, yes, is that showing up now?
It is, thank you. So would you like to guide us through this?
No, but I will. Sorry. Get a little snarky in my old age. All right, is that easier to read?
It is.
Okay, so, um, so yeah, so again, looking at the chart and hearing the committee and their concerns, I thought it might be better to, um, give some context and criteria for a pivot. Um, so I start off with a rationale, um, you know, that we're gonna continue to prioritize in-person learning as we navigate, uh, you know, the pandemic. Um, the design of our hybrid model, as you all know, is created to allow pivoting between in-person and hybrid, remote, without disruption or pause, uh, and that we're gonna make every effort to not disrupt our scheduled in-person, uh, learning. Where circumstances may require an adjustment of staffing or moving a classroom to remote learning in extreme circumstances of school or possibly a district to full remote for a period of time. We're cautiously optimistic that these pivots will shorten duration and we will endeavor to return to the in-person aspect of the hybrid model as soon as possible. So then I kind of defined what those circumstances are that would cause us to have to do a pivot. Uh, first would be staffing issues, not having, basically not having enough staff, uh, to do, uh, the work. And that could be, they need to be, they need to quarantine. They need to be isolated until test results come in. Uh, there's some other illness, you know, a regular sick day, if you will, or if there's some illness in the home, uh, having to take care of a family member, or maybe they need to quarantine, uh, because of a sick family. Then there's student issues, um, and that's obviously students displaying COVID-like symptoms, ordered to quarantine or isolate. And, you know, if you have, you know, the majority of a class that is out, uh, it might be better to do that whole class. We've had to do that on, uh, on occasion, especially with some of our, a couple of our sub-separate classrooms. Um, so, and this kind of gets into the third one, the classroom attendance, where a large number of students falling under, you know, that category two, um, and that really, there's a tipping point where it, you know, it's easier to educate all the students in remote than try to mix hybrid and remote. It does, to some extent, um, differ by grade level. Obviously, the high school would have a much easier time without doing this than elementary school, where we have different kind of structure. Uh, a cluster or outbreak in a school or a grade level, uh, where the best and safest option is to pivot to remote learning for a period of time. Um, and that could, you know, easily be, and there is an official definition of a cluster. I don't know if Sigal wants to define that at this point.
Yeah, it's very easy. It's two people that are not related, not in the same household.
There you go. Um, so if we have, if we have this big outbreak or a large chance of transference, then we would obviously want to, you know, try to stop the spread, if you will. Um, then if we get multiple exposures among large populations in the school, the grade, or perhaps teachers in a particular grade, uh, which is what kind of happened today, um, we are starting to see because of, uh, the increase in testing and cases, a lag in, um, in the reporting to the Department of Health. So we've had several instances where the schools, because people have called the schools and notified them, thank you very much, were able to kind of get a head start on it. Um, but there's a little bit of a lag coming through. I'm hoping that that is going to, uh, smooth out, but that would be another example. So, so the mitigation strategies, and these are in order of priority. Obviously, the first option would be to adjust staff um, absences and retain the in-person model. Um, so this could be a short shift, less than five days. That's not any different than a teacher calling in sick and bringing in a sub sort of thing. Uh, the one challenge we have is that we do not have subs. There are not people out there. People are either employed um, in full-time teaching positions or not able or willing to do that work for various reasons. Everything from health issues to their own family situations. Uh, in all cases, we do need to protect the privacy of individuals, and those come under HIPAA as well as the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act. Uh, so we need to be careful. I know people wanna know, wanna know, wanna know. Unfortunately, we have to respect people's privacy. Um, so these staff shortages may be resolved by inserting a substitute teacher. We do have some building subs, and we are using them. Uh, we could arrange teacher coverage, where teachers will pick up an extra period of work, uh, elevating a para to teach for a day, or perhaps, uh, one of the things at the elementary level, and the design was purposely put so that we could have a remote teacher come in and do in-person instruction, and maybe the in-person teacher become the remote teacher. Um, this is a decision at the principal level, at the building level, uh, and they will notify me. Um, but that is our first priority. So pivoting a classroom to remote learning, which would kind of be the next step uh, on the journey. This would be the case if staffing could not be shifted, or the number of, or the numbers out of in-person instruction necessitates such a shift. I mentioned that earlier. Uh, families would be notified of the pivot to remote learning the day before. Basically, as soon as we're able to ascertain that we can't do a Level One intervention, um, and we'll try to give some indication as to what the intended return would be. People need to understand that this would be fluid. Uh, it's based on the information we have now and how long people would have to quarantine, but if there is another case, that could be extended. Um, this is what happened, um, today, where we had a positive case and two close contacts in our staff. Um, and we do not have the substitute staff to take over for the in-person part. Those teachers are still able to teach and will do so remotely. Um, pivoting a school or a grade level, um, this will be necessary if it's a large number of individuals, and be it either staff individuals or student individuals, uh, multiple exposures, um, leading to a difficult contact tracing process that can get very involved. Uh, and this is where we have a decision of the superintendent, consultation with the health director and the building principal. That's what we did today. Sigal's had more than one opportunity to talk to me today. I'm sure she's sick of looking at me. Uh, but we had a conversation with the person who did the contact tracing, the school nurse, the building principal, uh, Sigal and myself, and went through the whole case to determine the best option um, to do that and moved on that this afternoon. The School Committee was notified even prior to that message, uh, going out to families. Um, and then we get to step four, which is kind of pivoting the entire district to remote learning. Um, this is where we're witnessing the multiple exposures over multiple schools. Uh, we're seeing the numbers rise. My personal feeling is that we're going to see the numbers build and build. Um, or actually, more accurately, uh, Sigal would see, um, that problem. We probably would see that problem as well. Um, and that's where we get into the School Committee decision to, you know, pivot the district to remote for a period of time. So that would be a move to stop a, you know, town-wide spread or a multiple-school spread. So then in conclusion, uh, the priority is to ensure the health and safety of our students. That has been first and foremost in every piece that we've done. We're committed to retain and return to in-person learning as soon as possible. We do understand and completely value the in-person model in our hybrid. Uh, we want to preserve that as long as possible. And again, I'll go back to the fact that we designed our hybrid model to increase our op- our chances um to uh to do that. Um, in the event of circumstances that affect staffing and student participation in activities, extended sports, clubs and the like, uh we would look first at possibly shifting staffing, uh depending on um the sport, perhaps JV come up to varsity. However, the next necessary step would be to pause those activities uh until those concerns are are rectified. So that's um my draft, and I think that kind of explains how we would uh how we would approach it, so.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Any questions, discussion from the committee on this document? Joan?
Sorry. Um, so this is, this is great. I think there's a couple of places that you you already turned to Segal and said, hey, what's a cluster? Um, that I just like to see some of that stuff written down, just to make it easier for people to reference. Um, if you think about a large, if you think about a large number, I would say that that's half a classroom. Um, but that might only be two students. And so in terms of my own as a parent planning, um I think it's helpful to have as much information as possible, kind of like the floor for when you and Segal would even be initiating a conversation, or you and a building principal to even be initiating a conversation around, okay, do we, do we shut this down or not? Um, so it's 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 more about just making sure everybody, the transparency piece versus trying to take away the discretion.
Right, right, yeah. And I and I wholeheartedly agree with that, but it, but I, and I know the committee knows this, but I want the public to know this. There is not a case in the schools that the superintendent is not involved in because the superintendent has to report that case to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So I'm invol- involved with all of them. Um, so and, you know, the the, you know, the frequency is gotten, has increased over time, as we all all are aware, but I I want everyone to to know that the superintendent is aware of every case. Sometimes there's a lot coming at once and we can confuse which elementary school it's at, but I have to report that to the Department of Ed. I am currently keeping um kind of a journal of the cases because there there is going to be a weekly email that I'm looking to uh hopefully send out on Thursday afternoons uh describing the cases to the public. Uh, we have worked really hard to to be transparent. I think that um has helped uh people understand what what is going on and have knowledge, but there are still limitations to what we can do with the Privacy Act, and I think we just need to come back to that. Um, but yeah, we can do that. I'm sure Segal can uh add, help, uh help me wordsmith that.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Thompson on this document? No. Okay. Anything else, uh Dr. Thompson or Segal, uh related to public health at this time?
No, I think my uh my plan is to is to finish that, this tomorrow and get it up on the website as part of the news and and quick links so people can go back and look. Um, but I think it's important that everybody knows that we have talked about this. We do have a process and we are prioritizing first health and safety and second, keeping our in-person part of hybrid running, you know, as much as we can. Um, I'm getting a little concerned with the, you know, with the with the holidays and people coming together that uh we're going to see more of these pivots um in the next, in the mu- next month or so, but. Hang on, and and, you know, and if we talked, and if we go back, way back to when we first talked about this design, I mentioned that, you know, I mentioned repeatedly to to families even back in June that we needed to be prepared to pivot between in-person and remote on a dime because we are going to have infections in cases and exposures, and we're going to need need to be able to react to that to keep people safe. So that was in the process, in the thought process, in the design, back to back the end of May. Um, and this is why we are, and if we look at, you know, we are lucky. Part of that is, and you know, I have to give a shout out to, uh especially to our high school students, making good choices about how how and what they are doing. We have not seen um large groups, you know, doing behavior that does not, you know, isn't consistent with our protocols, knock on wood. I'm I'm asking that they continue that. We do not want to to disrupt uh their education. We want to keep providing that to them. So I appreciate that. And parents, keep keep stressing and we're going to keep teaching.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might add, one one reminder also, in addition to all the the COVID state safety standards, um like superintendent was just talking about, and everybody in the whole community really following them also, and we want to remind people about getting their flu vaccine. Um, obviously, there's a mandate for the the students, but um and the school nurse leader Jill has put together clinics at all the schools that are running this week. Information's on your website, and also the health department runs a clinic every Tuesday, uh one to three, and that's open to fourteen and older. Um, so there's plenty of availability. All the pharmacies have it, and we just want to encourage as much of the population to get their flu shot also.
Right, and 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 just to follow up on that, thank you, Segal. Uh, you do need to notify the school nurse when you, you know, with that documentation for your flu shot. We are keeping count, and much like other vaccinations, we will be in the position where we will have to uh have discussions about when you're going to get that shot and possibly exclude. And it does, the governor's order does in- include remote students. It is any student, okay? Um, so please, 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 please get your flu shot. Uh, obviously, you know, someone could have something that's not COVID that presents as COVID. Uh, and we are taking, you know, we we are mitigating based on the symptoms until we know otherwise. So by having a flu shot, we are going to reduce the number of disruptions we're going to have. Of course, there are the exceptions and 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 opt-outs that are for all vaccinations involved. Um, but this is not a free choice thing. Um, but, you know, and I would rather not come back in the holidays, be talking with parents about excluding students from school, and that would be school, school. So, um. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Segal, for joining us again for the update. Um, we will move to our next appearance. Uh, so Ms. Capizio is here again tonight uh to talk to us about extended-day fees. Um, as a reminder to the committee, um over the summer, we approved the fees for both the after-school extended day and also the remote learning support program um through December. Um, but we had said we would come back this month, see how the program's doing, and reassess the fees for uh January through June of 2021. Um, so Ms. Capizio, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for having me this evening. Um, we are, uh, you know, this is, this meeting has been perfect. The presentation before this uh presents a great framework for discussing how extended day has been impacted these last three months. Um, so uh we are, you know, through the summer program and the extension to the summer program, the um the remote learning program and the after-school program, you know, I'd say overall, we're doing very well. We are an exception, and we're doing exceptionally well within the dis- I mean, within the district because so many districts have not been able to offer this many services. Um, also, the assessment that we're doing now is consistent with what so many other districts are also doing, um trying to survive what are some rarely mercurial and unpredictable times. So, um, with that, I will share the um the X that I put together with um Ms. Sheridan. Well, actually, did you invite questions before or do you want me to present first?
Uh, why don't you present first and then?
Sounds good. Let me know when you can see. Is my screen up?
It is now. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, great. So originally, we looked at a one percent increase to the COVID fee um to provide a a buffer for the program from January through June. We've seen, we had about seventy-five percent of our budgeted um enrollment, and we um hired and we staffed based on that percentage. However, um over the last two and a half months, um we've seen a lot of fluctuation in enrollment due to COVID, quarantining, family traveling out of state, um, you know, um, uh, quarantining within the schools and and parents need to take significant time off, or um younger siblings, you know, um someone in a daycare, um and that person in the daycare has COVID, and so the whole family has to quarantine. So we looked at a one percent increase to um the the COVID charge that we originally had, and um unfortunately, that was still going to take us just a little bit under. The margin was going to be too narrow. So then we um examined a two percent increase and a three percent increase to sort of show, show what kind of buffer we would have if we had to implement an increase in order to keep the program afloat for the next uh four and a half months. In the three percent increase, we're looking at just about fifty per- fifty cents more on the after-school program. So that would be fifty cents per day, um and uh would look like fourteen fifty total. And in the remote learning program, it would be just about a dollar forty more. So um about forty-seven dollars and ninety cents versus forty-six fifty. In the three percent um increase, uh we're looking at a buffer that would account for some additional fluctuation in our enrollment. So if we do see a spike after the holidays, uh you know, we might, we would be able to continue to um adjust our staffing, but also keep the program open. You know, we have had a lot of very positive feedback from our parents. The parents who are enrolled in the program rely on it heavily. Um, we also have a significant number of families enrolled in the program who are um reliant on voucher and full tuition subsidy. So the program is serving, it's our opinion, a very critical community need. So um we do want to look at how these increases can help to keep the program um open for the next four months until the end of June. Um, I think I will, um, I can leave it open if you'd like, or I can stop sharing and answer questions.
Uh, let's take questions now. Um, questions, comments on what Ms. Capizio just shared? Was there additional information at this time, or would you like us to um discuss and decide on the fee increase?
Yeah, no, I think we were just going to discuss the the fee increase and um and why it's being presented today, which is um based on um some um fairly unpredictable, unstable economic circumstances, which are based on COVID.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Capizio. Um, is there, Ms. Capizio?
So I just was curious, um, something we were kind of discussing. What, um, has there been any um outreach to any of the other families to see if there's anybody, any way to reef, to fill in these spots? So I'm a former um extended-day uh parent, and I hadn't heard that we had lots of openings. I'm not necessarily, you know, wouldn't necessarily use it myself, but I'm wondering if there are families out there that just didn't apply, thinking they wouldn't get one of the limited spots, and is there, you know, uh a way to do some outreach to those parents who maybe aren't in the fold anymore, that there are openings and hopefully fill in some of those spaces?
Yeah, I love that. I love that idea. Um, I've been looking at a lot of mitigation strategies. Um, that is one of them. Um, you know, certainly, we we um connect with Jack Tolman to see in what ways we can advertise through the weekly news to share things that are going on with the program, highlights, availability. Um, certainly communications with principal. Um, you know, we've been very lucky actually to have a lot of the um staff within the building refer parents to our program, knowing that we're open. So e- especially with the after-school program, um teachers, you know, there is a seamless transition, and um school adjustment counselors, they've been very um vocal in promoting access to our program. So I do think that, you know, I think that there's more that can be done internally, and I certainly want to examine, you know, what those, what efforts that entails. But I do think we're also working on um some outside or external partnerships that would help us with capacity. So, um, you know, working with um core members to see if we can have some, you know, part or full-time volunteers in the program. Um, working with, you know, Massachusetts Service Alliance to see if we can kind of develop a better um strategy for um for the long-term invitation and maintenance of volunteers for the program, you know, everything toward capacity buildings.
That's great, and I'm thinking. Other questions or make a motion on how to proceed? Maya?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of um a three percent increase, um and this will be reflected as um, you know, a COVID surcharge. This is not, this would just be for this um starting January one and going through the end of the school year.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Is there a second on that motion?
No, second now.
Thank you, Emery. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, that passes five zero. So, thank you, Ms. Capizio. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan, for your work um on that analysis as well. Um, and keep us posted, and if there's anything that, you know, we can do to help spread the word, uh let Dr. Thompson know, and we will help with the program.
I will, I will. I never hesitate to be vocal. All right, good night.
Good night.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so now moving along to superintendent report. Dr. Thompson?
Yes, so a couple of things I wanted to update the the committee on. Uh, the first is the chair asked that um I share um a report on this, the racial composition of our different, here it is, uh of our uh remote and hybrid um learning environments. So you can see, can you see that?
We can.
Okay, and I don't know if I can. So you look, the first one is uh the total district, and this is going to be a little confusing because it depends on which data pool you're looking at. So um in this one, this is uh how the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education counts these things. Um, and it does have a separate entry for uh Hispanic, Hispanic, Latino students. So you can see, the first one is the total district, uh and then the second one is remote students. And you can see out of the total district, we have eight hundred and fifty-four, and that's all grade levels, that's district-wide. Uh, hybrid student, we have students, we have two thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. Uh, you can see that there is almost twice as many African-Americans in the remote uh environment, um and significantly more in the Asian um population. Occasion, uh there is less remote, uh multirace. Um, we're seeing that more in the uh in the hybrid, uh Pacific Islander. You know, pretty uh pretty close, we look at the percentages. Uh, Native American, uh not that much difference in there, so you can see how that um kind of uh plays out. But obviously, uh it is appearing that our 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 remote learning academy in its very form and function uh is looking more diverse than our hybrid. Um, the next one is um how the uh CRDC, which is the federal poll, uh and they do not um treat uh Hispanic Latino as a separate race. Um. So it's, um, anyway, so that, wh- when you do that, uh it breaks down again. You're seeing almost uh double uh between uh remote and hybrid and African-American. Uh, Asian, again, still a significant amount in uh in the remote. Occasion, you can see, that number is wrong, right? That it should be fifty-four, I believe. Uh, but you can see that number there. Multirace, again, many more in the hybrid. Pacific Islander, essentially the same. Native American, essentially the same. Uh, and Hispanic Latino, you can see that that brings, with with the different data pool, you get a, you get a more uh uh more of a a equal number. All right, so um. And then this one, what they did was they pulled it out, but that's, but that's kind of a quick synopsis. Uh, you know, generally stating, you know, the the remote learning academy uh is appearing to be more ethnically diverse. We're seeing larger numbers of of different ethnic groups in in the remote only. Any, are there any questions from the, from any of that that I can try to answer?
Well, thank you, Dr. Thompson, for um sharing that. I know I've been asking you a lot of questions on the statistics and the demographics, um and you just shared district-wide. I believe that we're seeing the most ethnic diversity at the elementary RLA level, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Um, and I wish Segal was still on. Um, it's okay that she's not. Uh, but a separate conversation that I was having with her around uh just the public health data of COVID. Um, so in Norwood, um we are a town that is approximately eighty percent Caucasian across all ages. Um, but with, when you look at COVID cases, it's about fifty percent impacting Caucasians and fifty percent impacting other ethnicities. So there really is a burden of disease um with COVID on the ethnic populations. And I just wonder, I'm not saying we have to do this, but my research brain wants to dive into all this data um because I think there's probably some correlation and lessons learned um in where the burden of disease is and where families are choosing to be remote-only. Um, but I do think as a school system, as a school committee, it's really important for us to be aware of the demographics. Um, and I know we've been talking about it in our strategic planning committee and around diversity and inclusion and equity, um but I just feel like there's probably a lot of lessons learned in this experience.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so the, so the next thing I wanted to update the committee on is just a brief update on our strategic planning process and progress. So we have a semifinal draft completed. We've kind of learned that doing it remotely, breakout room is a little bit more complex and time-consuming than maybe being in person. But a lot of hard work going on, a lot of great conversations. I think, you know, once again, the strength of this district is the passion people have for it and the willingness they are to come together, to put together a plan. So that plan I have sent off to, on strategy, to our consultant there to review. She is in the process of doing that. She expects to have that back to us by the end of the week. From that, we may have a short, a short strategic planning meeting from there. And my hope, fingers crossed, is that the, is that the December meeting, I would have a final version for your approval, we would be up and ready to roll thereafter. So she's specifically looking for key performance indicators. I asked her to give us some, give us some feedback. One of the things we struggled with was to come up with some measurements that were not really, we did it, we didn't do it. The committee struggled with that, but we have, we have some good ones in there. And actually, her first look at it, she was pretty impressed with the strategies, with the, with the objectives we have, how we did come up with those, which I think is important for the committee to, to hear. So I don't know if Teresa or Maia want to add any comments onto that quick synopsis, or not to put you on the spot, but you can say no, it's okay.
And it's been quite the process, and it involves a lot of people, just as it did the first, you know, go around. But so then, just a thank you, you know, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Maia, all the principals, Ms. Nino, Ms. Sheridan, and Haley's part of the process, Joe Kit. It's, it's really a collective teamwork from the leadership.
Right. Thank you. All right. And then I did include there the memo from John Galong, our A.D., and he is recommending no change in fees or stipends, but I don't think I need to spend much time with that. I am going to kind of go back, and I've heard the question before, you know, kind of, the superintendent's agenda, I'm not beholden to necessarily having something on the agenda before discussing, but the conversation of bringing students back. So I'm going to refer to that a little bit right now. I did mention it last week with the governor pushing to have students come back, which is very interesting at this point in time. And as I said last time, if the governor would like to provide the money for us to do it safely, and the guidelines that we have used to design this model, we'd be more than willing to do that. But I just want to make sure, and as I said at the beginning, we have older, smaller buildings, and even if we went to three feet, which is not our agreement with any of the people who are working with us in the schools at this point in time, and in conflict with the recommendation with the Centers for Disease Control, who have said six feet. So I know the governor is, is rolling out research and experts to say, bring them back at three feet, but the important thing for the people in Norwood to understand is that even if we went three feet, we could not get everybody into our classrooms. So that's number one. The other thing I think that is very interesting is that today, I don't know if anyone saw the news, there were 4,613 cases, new cases of COVID-19. That is the highest single-day number in the state of Massachusetts. I'll repeat that again. 4,613 cases, and that is the highest number in the state of Massachusetts ever to this point. So I think it's quite interesting that we're having this push and pressure on schools that spent a tremendous amount of time, gave plans to the Department of Education that were approved in June for how we were going to operate our schools, and now with our numbers climbing, there is a lot of pressure running back. Now, trust me, and I know I speak for any educator in the system, we would love to have our kids back full-time. Absolutely love, and I constantly hear that, it's so great to have the kids back, I want to have them, I wish I could have them all back. That is a constant thing that we are hearing. However, there are limitations. The state has still not changed any regulations around transportation and ventilation. So I just sat in a webinar this afternoon on ventilation and what have you. So if we bring more numbers into our schools, our elementary schools that do not have central ventilation, we will have to have more windows open wider, longer, to meet the requirement as we enter the winter. I will repeat again, if we bring more people in, we need to have more ventilation in schools without a central ventilation system as we approach winter. We're already going to need to have kids wear coats and hats this winter. So the governor has not provided the funding to do this following the CDC guidelines. I would, if we want to rent more space and the state wants to provide it, I will say it again, if they want to hire administrators to supervise these new learning places, we could probably find some places to rent to do this, but I need money to do it. So just saying it's safe to bring kids back while the numbers are increasing, it is just not, it just doesn't ring true. It is more complex than just saying bring kids back. Now, with that being said, the other thing I will mention is that there's an article in The Globe, I think it will appear tomorrow morning, talking about this issue. It's online right now. It actually does a pretty good job of explaining it, and I would welcome anyone to, you know, to, to read that and go through that. Now, with that being said, we are cautiously optimistic that, you know, these vaccines are going to come out. You know, we've only had a phase, phase-three trial, folks. These are not fully, you know, and I don't want to scare people, but these are, these are, have been researched, but there's still more research to do and more people to, to have try and study with this. All right, but we're hopeful that, that the results that we're seeing are going to continue to be there. We're hopeful that they will be able to produce these. We are hopeful that people will partake, which is another factor in all this, how many people are going to line up to get the vaccine. Okay? So, you know, those things, I'm hopeful that at some point, we can be closer to normal and do it safely. I am hopeful that by next September, we, this will all just be a bad dream. So, you know, but, you know, to, to, you know, for the governor to, to pressure and to roll out experts that are giving new information, and, you know, my, my first degree was in biology, so there's a science background here, folks, okay? But to, to do that months after the fact, when you have designed a school system and negotiated agreements and come to understandings of how we're going to do something and expect that is going to change over time, are, are we considering how we would bring people back and what it would take? Yes. Do we have a hardcore plan? No, we need, we kind of need to see where that virus lands and comes out. So that's kind of my rebuttal to those that want to bring students back, and I want to bring students back, I will need to be clear on that, but I want to bring students back. I want to do it safely. I want to make sure my staff is safe. I need to make sure my students are safe. Right now, we have designed a system where we are not seeing in-school transmission, knock on wood. Okay? We, we are not seeing cross-cohort transmission, knock on wood, because of the design of the hybrid system. So, you know, the other thing that, that we are doing that other districts are not doing is we have live teachers working with their students on a daily basis. It's still through a screen, trust me, I'd rather have them in school, it would be a heck of a lot easier, okay? But that is not what other districts are doing. A lot of the push from the governor is because a lot of schools are having meetings in the morning, do your work, meetings in the afternoon, thanks for doing your work. It's not direct instruction. Okay? So this push to have people come back is not representative of the model that we have. So with that, I do want to share, and I forgot to pull it, pull it up, I do want to share one quick thing, because the other piece that we are going to be doing, and if everyone will remember, we, we said that we would, oh, here we are, that we would report out weekly on our numbers. I'm intending on, on giving that email and, and message on Thursdays, but I just wanted to go to the front page of our school website, and again, this is norwood.k12.na.us. Can everybody see that?
We can.
Okay. So along the top, there is a link, and then down over at the bottom here with the quick links, you can see the school COVID case tracker. All right, so this is all stuff that we have attached, is right here at the top. This is, if you click on this, it brings you to the Health Department website where you can see the school cases right there. So you need to go directly to the norwoodma.gov and look under Department of Health, and you, you will see this, or you can go through the school website to see this. But these are the current cases that are in the schools, all right? The total cases, the active cases, all right? Those are all defined down here. I'm not going to read it to you, but if you would like to be able to check that and know what is going on, that's, that's where, where you will find it. Okay? But so I've, we've tried again, under the, under the attempt to be as transparent as possible, we have, working with the Health Department, made that clear, and people are able to get that, and they will get weekly updates as well. If there are, come back over here, sorry, it's on that tab. If we are in a position where we are doing more than a classroom of pivoting, we, we do notify the members of that classroom. We do, we will notify the community if we have to do that. Again, I would ask that we respect people's privacy in that. We don't need to be talking about who has what or speculating. Just know that your, your children's health and safety is first and foremost on our mind, and that we will err on the side of caution and out of abundance of caution to make sure there is no reduce, I shouldn't say no, reduce the chance of, of spread. So with that, I don't know if anyone on the committee has any questions of any of the pieces that I went over this evening?
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Maia?
Dr. Thompson, I was wondering, since you were talking about the remote learning academy, I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about the, the change that we saw, you know, we just went through the period where people could change their, their option for whether they wanted to be in the hybrid model or the remote learning academy. I know we had first the high school and the middle school, and then the elementary. I was just wondering if you could kind of summarize what happened there?
Yeah, and unfortunately, I closed that link like this morning, our little spreadsheet, so I can't give you exact numbers unless you want to wait for me to fumble through my Google Drive and find it. All right, but basically, we had about, about 20 to 30 kids change pay, change placement. Out of that, more than two-thirds, maybe 70%, were moving from hybrid to, I'm sorry, from remote to hybrid. And we had some move from, from the hybrid to the remote. We were able to accommodate all of those changes, except one, and the parent did decide to move the other child to the same place. So we did, we did have one, one parent who is going to, going back, but not to, you know, the school they went to beforehand at this point in time. So we were able to accommodate that without having to disrupt staffing or anything on that line. So that was, that was good news. So hopefully, people are, are settling in. We did later on the fall have two health concerns, and we did make those changes right away, from hybrid to, to remote because of a recent diagnosis, or diagnoses, plural. So those are, but there is another date coming up, I don't have it right off the top of my head. Those students will start in their new placement on the 14th of December, which is kind of like the, right after the report cards come out. And part of the limitation with that is our student information system. If we change them and their placement, the grades get lost. So we're going to assume that people want some, want their grades, so.
So at the, the high school and the middle school level, I think we saw a little bit of movement, and it was a net movement toward the remote learning academy. But at the elementary level, where we originally saw the most, the highest percentage of students opting for the remote learning academy, on, there really wasn't much movement at all, and if there was, it was net back into the hybrid rather than increasing the LA numbers.
Correct. We do have, do have, we do have a few grade levels and a few, two grade levels in two schools that are kind of right now packed full in the hybrid model. We don't have room for somebody, which is why we had to move. One, we didn't have to move, and in one particular school, we did have to move a student. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, worked out well. Hopefully, people are going to settle in and have found, you know, their, their, their best place, if you will, and that will be consistent going forward, so.
Any other questions for Dr. Thompson on his report? Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
So moving along the budget, but I don't believe we have any budget transfers tonight. Is that correct, Ms. Sheridan?
That's correct.
Okay. So then moving along to old business, first item that we want to discuss is our school committee goals that we started to discuss at the last meeting. Dr. Thompson, could you pull up that document?
Sure.
Thank you.
Which is very cooperative.
So I made some minor changes to the document based on the discussion and some feedback after our last meeting, but it's largely still the same goals. Just wondering, you know, if we can have a more robust discussion now as a committee around what these goals are, if there is anything you think we need to adjust or remove. But as a reminder, most of these things we cannot remove, because they are things that we absolutely have to do, like negotiations and the middle school building and the policy audit and the budget process. But I will just leave it open for discussion from my fellow committee members on this document. Maia?
I wanted to talk a little bit about this idea of a monthly school committee newsletter. I do like the idea of additional community outreach, but I also know that, you know, anything that we put out that represents the actual school committee, I believe we would need to vote on, on these things. And, you know, certainly, we vote on our minutes and all of that. I'm just curious, kind of, what you were envisioning and, and, and how this would work?
Yeah, I'll let Joan speak to it a little bit more too, because this is something that came up in our policy subcommittee meetings when we were looking at, like, you know, the PR and the communication. But what I've seen other districts do who have newsletters, it's just basically a recap of their meeting. So it's a more consumer-friendly version of the minutes, and then also linking to, you know, like the documents or the presentations that Dr. Thompson or others may share, but really designed for, you know, we've had these meetings this month, this is what we talked about, this is where you can find the information. I, I personally was not envisioning anything that wasn't already discussed and decided on by the school committee. But Joan, what were you thinking as we were exploring this idea of a newsletter?
Yeah, I'm not sure, am I breaking up? Can you hear me? My video is a little.
No, we can hear you.
Okay, my video is off because my internet's having some trouble. Yeah, I think what we were envisioning was exactly that. So it was essentially a cleaned-up, more user-friendly version of the minutes with links going to presentations that had been presented in the school committee meeting. Yeah, so anytime that we have, anytime that we are introducing new policies, we need to get community feedback. So it would be saying, you know, here's where to find the policy for, for linking to feedback, those types of things. I'm not saying anything different than Teresa. It's the same vision.
Okay. Are you comfortable with that, Maia, or do you have concerns with that?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't, I, I don't know, I just think, like, there would be room to be trying to explain why a decision was made or something like that, but that could get really hairy. Like, are you really actively, you know, accurately capturing everybody's thoughts? And like, we do have formal minutes, and they are approved, and they are on the website all the time. So I just was trying to figure out, you know, how this was different and, and how we would make sure that it didn't, you know, kind of reflect one member's particular you know, kind of reflect one member's particular agenda. And I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything out, like, you know, it's hard to do.
Yeah.
I think that, though, I guess the way that I am conceiving of this, when I compare it to other things, is it would be like the executive summary of the minutes. Right, so like, here's the quick, you know, paragraph version. Here's the links if you want more detail.
Okay. Yeah, and we were thinking like short and sweet. I mean, this is not going to be an elaborate project. And I can send out links to some other districts that I think do it really well, like Walpole does a school committee newsletter, actually, after every meeting. And there's some other districts that I was looking at. Some do go into a lot of detail, like Newton's newsletter is like very long. I don't think we want to do that. But, you know, especially with everything we have ahead, the policy audit, the middle school project. Like, there's just going to be so much communication that we want to get out, and this could be an easy way to get into people's inboxes and link them to the appropriate, you know, survey we want them to take or presentation we want them to review.
Teresa?
Yeah, Dave?
Yeah, no, I've worked on newsletters before, and they have a way of kind of spiraling out of control because there's so much more that you can put into it all the time. It's pretty tough, and I'd love to see other districts to see what they're kind of doing. But thanks to the power of the internet, I can see the Newtons got like eight members on the school committee, maybe? So they've got a lot more man, let's see, people power than we do.
Yeah, no, absolutely. We're a very small committee. Most committees are between seven and nine. We're five. Further discussion on specifically the newsletter, or we can just look at, you know, the first portion of the goals, which takes us through the end of March of 2021. Anything that you want to see edited there? The eighth one around the North Schools Listen, it's still not fully flushed out. I linked to a document that I put together, some professional development. It was like resources and books, but there's a lot of professional development we could do around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I don't really know how we want to get it started. But I was thinking, starting with something pretty simple, whether it is a book or one of these resources with some articles. Or, you know, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyatt, if there's anything from the Highlander Institute, you know, that the admin team is doing that you think would carry over as a simple, not simple, but a good way to start PD for the school committee?
Was that a question to me?
Yes, it's a question to everybody.
Yeah, well, I don't know what you think, Dave, about it. But yeah, that's good information that they have been providing. We've had day two today of a six-part training. And is there information in there that would benefit school committee? I would think so, sure. You know, so it might be a, I mean, a lot of their slide decks, we certainly can share with you. But there's a lot of sort of group discussion and sort of breakout group work like that that is a large part of it. But, you know, they might be willing to do something special for school committee. We could ask about that.
Yeah, that might be a better, you know, do a workshop might be a better.
Yeah, and since they're already working with our district, are very familiar with our mission and vision and where we are and our leadership team, that would be helping us bridge that consistency between the school committee and the leadership.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
When is that, the next meeting of the Highlander Institute admin team in two weeks?
Yes, I'll give you a date here shortly. So I mean, you're welcome to sit in on it, you know, and get a sense for things. You were a couple of folks.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth is our next one, yeah.
Okay. But could you, Dr. Wyatt and Dr. Thompson, talk with them and see if there is like a one-time workshop that they could offer for the school committee to get us started on this dialogue?
Yeah, it's a pretty intensive thing. So when you say one time, are you talking about like a full-day workshop or one hour? I don't think they'd do a one-hour thing because that's not going to do much for you.
Yeah, that's a very broad and important topic. But there's something that we can commit to, you know, between January and March to get this started. And then later on in the goal document for the second year of March 2021 to 2022, we'll have to figure out what we can do then. Because it's something to get us started.
Yeah, all right, I'll talk to Meg about it and make small engine company.
You know, and obviously, obviously, that's step one around awareness of the issue would probably be a good start. And describing the other part of the process would probably be enough of a start for the school committee to meet this goal. And support, you know, the district and ourselves in our efforts, so.
You want to get that in before, when did you say, Teresa, March, did you say?
Yeah, some type of PD for us before the end of March, if I'm wrong.
Okay, all right. Yep, we can get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments on the first portion of the goals through the end of March? Okay, so Dr. Thompson, could you scroll down then to the second full year from March 2021 to March of 2022?
Yep.
So again, we'll just need to figure out what our expectations are for North Schools Listen, but that's probably contingent upon the first professional development. Joan?
I just had a question about the number seven here about analyzing the elementary model registering and possible reconfiguration of the schools. Do you envision that as being connected to the middle school project? But no, because that's too late, right?
So that is based on the timeline of the middle school project. So what has been addressed with the middle school core leadership group right now? So by the end of June, we have to submit to the MSBA what our preferred grade configuration is. So we'll know by the end of June, are we building a five-through-eight or a six-through-eight? And then once we know that, then we'll be able to dive into this next piece of starting to analyze the elementary model.
Okay, that makes sense. I thought we would have to do that before, and I was gonna, anyway, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we'll definitely be assessing the fifth grade question, but the huge elephant in the room about the elementary model, that'll be the next step and, you know, overlapping a lot of the middle school work. But first, we have to decide, is the middle school five-through-eight or six-through-eight? So I know we have to define a little bit more the North Schools Listen initiative, which, you know, we can do that. But overall, is the committee comfortable with this document?
Yeah, I especially like number 11.
No, it's very important. And I think all of us on this committee, as we came on, we were like, what are we doing? So we definitely need that new member handbook. And I actually have a couple of templates from Dorothy at MASC of other districts' member handbooks. So I don't, it will be an endeavor, but we have something to work off of. But just with everything else going on, I don't think it's realistic to work on in 2021. But it is very important to do. Okay, so does anybody want to make a motion to approve the document with the caveat that we'll continue to flesh out the professional development goals for North Schools Listen?
So moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Joan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, five-zero, great, thank you. So next item, old business, just a really quick update for everybody. The middle school start times task force, we did meet on the 19th as a task force. This was the first time we resumed since February before the pandemic. And we meet again as a task force next Tuesday. And I shared the minutes of the task force with you in your packet, so you can read all the details. But at this time, the task force unanimously has decided to continue on the path that we were on, which was coming to the school committee in January to present and share the recommendation, and then to come back in March for a vote on shifting start times. But are there any questions or direction from the committee based on the minutes that you want Dr. Thompson and I to take back to the task force next week?
Thank you for doing all this. No, it's a very tall order, and I applaud your work, so.
It's definitely been a team effort. There's some, as we know, our leadership team is amazing. And the members of the task force have been doing quite a lot of work for quite some time. So hopefully, we can vote and move this issue forward in one way or the other soon, since we've been working on it since 2017. But if anything does come up later on that you want us to talk to the task force about, just email Dr. Thompson, so we can do that next Tuesday. Okay, so moving along on the agenda, just quick policy update. So Joan and Dave and I met as a policy subcommittee on November 19th. Sorry, I had a look at the minutes. I forgot the day that we met. And you have our agenda and the minutes from the policy subcommittee. Nothing huge, nothing different from what we've talked about before, but just an update of where we are and when we'll start some work. The thing that we're working on right now through December is getting out a letter and surveys to the PTOs and to the principals to start to gather some feedback around how the PTOs are working and if there's areas of need that principals and the PTO leadership is identifying and letting them know that we are working on a policy audit and that we will be seeking more of their feedback in the new year. But do you have any questions for Joan and I based on the policy minutes? So we do not have any new business tonight. I do not see any donations, Dave. Is that correct?
We do not have any, no.
Okay. So at this time, school committee agenda. So Ann Marie?
Um, nothing tonight.
Hi, Maia?
I have nothing this evening either.
Dave Catania?
Nothing, except everybody continue to wash your hands, wear masks, and stay safe, please.
Yeah. Joan, do you have anything this evening?
I would just like to echo Dave Catania's comments.
I would just like to thank, you know, Sigal Reese for her continued support, Representative Rogers for joining us this evening and also advocating on our behalf, you know, with Dessie and the Board of Education as well. And then just to thank Ms. Capuzio for her continued work with extended day. And just thank everybody for everything this district is doing. I know we're all really tired. I know I definitely feel very fatigued these days. I not only hit the wall, I think I'm stuck in the wall. And, you know, we are working on so many initiatives, as evident by our strategic plan, as evident by our goal document. It's a lot, but it's such important work. And although it's exhausting, I hope all of you feel like the pride and the work that we're collectively doing because I can say without a doubt that we're making a difference for a lot of children. And that's why we're all here. So we do not have to go back into executive session. We were very efficient and effective in our executive session before this meeting. So at this time, 8:45, we can adjourn if there is a motion to do so.
Let's all stay and hang out. Motion to adjourn.
Davis, is there a second? Thank you, Maia. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, well, we will see everybody again on December 16th. Until then, stay safe and be well.
Thank you.